Good evening and welcome to the Monday, February 10, 2014 Board of Education meeting. I'd like to start off the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In the interest of trying to get to some of our more important, not that they're all not important, but some of our relatively more important agenda items, we're going to start off with item eight on the agenda, which is the Student Representatives Report. Then the representatives will be going, will be leaving, or staying as you wish, but the, our legislators have agreed very, very kindly to join us for this meeting, as is often the case right before the start of the session, or just after the start of the session. And then we'll likely go do a public forum for topics on the board agenda, then move toward the Superintendent's Report and so forth. So if people will just bear with me, we'll try to get, we'll try to do this in the most productive way possible. We'll get back to the minutes later. So why don't we go to item eight on the agenda, Student Representatives. What would you, what would you like to tell us?
Well, I'll start off with the high school. And we're in the full swing of quarter three. Midterms are over. We're already three weeks deep into quarter three. So the times will be quickly quarter full before you know it. And going with construction, it really goes along quickly every day. It's, the outline's really coming along. And Mr. Resenti would love me to point out that Get Your Homework Done Beam has been put up, and he loves to point that out every day. And also going along with that, the class of 2014 to 15 are working on an idea to have a time capsule put in the vestibule. So when we come back for our 20th class reunion, we can put some items in there that we would like to remember when we come back. And last but not least, a big one, for the first time ever in Guilford High School, or in our class's history, we beat hand in a basketball game. At Jam last week by five points. One of the best high school games I have ever been to, and I was proud that I could be there.
I spoke with Mr. Augustin, who is the principal at A.W. Cox, and he informed me that the school held an opening ceremony today for the Olympic reading incentive, which means the students will use reading passports to discover exciting new books and explore new genres while they start their quest to win the bronze, silver, and gold medals. And also, in collaboration with the Connecticut Storytelling Center, third graders and teachers will work on a professional storyteller to craft and design a play together. And the Green Team is making a difference by educating the school about the importance of recycling properly, and the announcements were made during the Cox Television Station.
Guilford Lakes Elementary School and Melissa Jones Elementary School are both continuing their Fill the Bucket programs, which promote positive interactions among students and faculty. Also at Lakes, they just hosted their first-ever math night on January 30th, and it was successful, and they're hoping to make it an annual event. And Melissa Jones would like to thank GHS Coach Craig Vedroni and Laura Vedroni, a third-grade teacher at Jones, for their score-reading program, in which high school athletes visit Jones each month to read books to elementary school students.
All we got? Great. All right. Well, thank you very much. We, we will-
Before you go, any news from Congress?
Not that I've heard from you, no.
I think most of the regular decisions will be coming back in March.
March. Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Well, I'd like to ask Representative Whitlitz and Representative Candelora and Senator Meyer, please, to come on up, and I'll grab the nameplates so people-
[laughing]
I should note that Mrs. Dudley is not here this evening. She's away. But joining us from New Zealand next year, Representative Whitlitz, is Dr. Chris Moore,
[laughing]
who is participating remotely, although he cannot vote. He is nonetheless participating. So we want to, again, thank you all for attending. I know that this is a very busy time, and they, you know, they call it a short session, but other than the fact that it's just a little bit shorter, I'm sure it's just as intense as, as any other session. And we've heard that there are things happening in Hartford on education, and so we sort of thought we'd like to kind of hear from you all what, what your perspective is on what's, what's happening. Who would like to start?
Okay. The governor has intimated that he would like to do some kind of retreat on the Common Core, perhaps to delay. And I want to urge you, the school board of the town in which I live, not to do that. I think the Common Core is essential to bring Connecticut, Guilford, and the country forward in a increasingly competitive society. The Common Core is not what some people are saying, some socialist federal initiative. It was actually the conception of two bodies, the National Governors Association and the Association of Chief State School Officers. It really emerged from the states. And indeed, when it was adopted by Connecticut, it was adopted by our state school board, and not, and not by the state legislature. The Common Core does not have a legal mandate in it from, from us. And so, now, that could, that could change. But right now, it is something that is yours. It sets some targets. I appreciate Superintendent Keen giving me some of the, some of the ideas in it, some of the targets, the goals. It's, it's, it really does it in a very balanced way, because it sets goals and targets, and lets you, the teachers and administrators of the schools, determine the curriculum that will reach those targets. That is something that we haven't done in this country or this state before, and it's, it's very, it's very, very significant. So I think we're going forward with the Common Core, and I will be, just as one state legislator, I'll be resisting any efforts to delay it. The other major effort we've had, that we have before us, is the question of teacher evaluation. And we legislators have met with hundreds of teachers, not so many from Guilford, okay? But we've met with hundreds of teachers from New Haven County, and they are asking us for major changes in the teacher evaluation system. And I have looked at that. I don't think we probably got it right last year when we did it. I think we got too prescriptive. I think we can put some more flexibility into the teacher evaluation system without losing it. But we did something in teacher evaluation that was very important on a statewide basis, because we had many school districts that either had no teacher evaluation or a teacher evaluation system that was not being enforced. And Guilford doesn't fit into that category. But we have heard extremely conscientious views from teachers and administrators about the teacher evaluation thing. I have sort of an educational background, having served on the New York State Board of Regents for many, many years. And I look at the teacher concerns, and I think they're absolutely understandable, but I worry that there is not a strong professional development system in their school districts behind it. And that's why there are so many, so many concerns. And, and lastly, going back to the Common Core, the Smart Balanced Assessment, parents, your parents, our parents, have written us, we're going to meet with some of them, I think, later this evening, about the relevance of the Smart Balanced Assessment test for this year. It won't count. And, and parents are complaining to us, asking us to take it off the table for a year, because it's going to be a lot of time to take that test, somewhat costly. And frankly, I would, I would, would love to hear the views of the school board and superintendent with respect to the use of that test this year. Does it make sense? I know one way it does make sense, and that is that it helps to assess the test, not the students, but it helps to assess the test. And part of every assessment is to assess the test, not the student. And that will be a helpful thing to us. So those are just a few remarks.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me here, Vincent Candelora. I represent North Guilford in town. And I think, you know, this session, we're in this, in this short session, so we'll be tweaking the budget. Obviously, education's become a big issue at the forefront. I'm not sure I don't envision us necessarily legislating anything in education, but administratively, we're obviously seeing some developments with the delay of the implementation of the teacher evaluations. And I think, you know, echoing what Senator Meyer has said, when we passed education reform dealing with teacher evaluations, I think one of the concerns we had is tying teacher evaluations too much to the test, so that we're going to be penalizing a teacher based on a student's test score, as opposed to their ability to teach the student. And I think that was sort of the premise of Common Core, one of the principles of why it was developed, and I think that's a little bit dangerous for the education system. So what we're obviously seeing, Connecticut is pulling back from the evaluation process right now, and, you know, retreating a bit and saying, okay, we need to take another look at it. And I just think, speaking as a parent, you know, there are certainly a lot of challenges, I think, with the implementation of Common Core, you know, K through three in particular. I know I've seen in our town in North Branford, it's quite rigorous and challenging for the teachers to be able to try to implement the curriculum and reach all of the children in the classroom. And, and I think that we're going to need to keep an eye on that. We're putting a lot of money into the program on a statewide level, and it's obviously, I think, everybody is wondering how well this will work. So I think, just generally speaking, as a legislator, it's something that we are going to review, but I'm, I'm not sure we're going to see any changes up in Hartford, or anything legislated in Hartford. Down the road, it is a possibility. And I think I'd let Representative Whitlitz talk about the budget.
Well, thank you for inviting us to be here again. We look forward to this every year. This year, actually, we have an operating surplus in our, our operating budget. So I can at least, with great confidence, say you won't be slashed and burned this time as part of our budget process, and I think you can expect the numbers to hold that, that you were anticipating. We did have a grant that was awarded to Guilford for technology to implement the Common Core. It was released at the last bond commission, so I hope you have that check. If not, let us know, and we will go after it. Sometimes it takes a little time getting that, that check in between the announcement and the delivery. But that was $127,694. So we were very pleased that you had evidently applied. Actually, I didn't know you had applied for the grant. So when I saw it on the bond commission agenda, I was very excited. This is really a boost for, for Guilford schools. That's great. You know, just a quick comment about the Common Core. You know, I think, you know, Dr. Freeman and I talked over a year ago, not, not so much in objection to the Common Core standards, but the scheduling, the timing. It was rushed, and it was too top-down. So I think it's, it's a good thing for us to take a step back and put a little more time and planning into this. And I really don't expect that we will be doing legislation relating to it. You really don't want us doing legislation relating to it with 181 legislators weighing in on how they think it should be implemented. So I think the negotiations will continue with the Department of Education and the Governor's Office, and I think that's going well at this point. I did want to just mention, I'm, I was delighted to see your support for all-day kindergarten and putting that money in your budget proposal. Way back when I was on this Board of Education in the 80s, we had a pilot program for all-day kindergarten. Everybody loved it, was very successful, but we never found the funding and the room and the facilities. So, I mean, it's time has really come, and in relation to the Common Core standards, there is so much work to be done in kindergarten now. It's, the expectations have been ratcheted up considerably, and it just seems an awful lot of pressure to put on young children to not have that full day and have a little breathing room, and a room for a little enrichment along in there. A couple of things I just wanted to mention to you. I've been getting calls from parents regarding playground, conditions of playgrounds. And I just wanted to make a pitch, I guess, for the Board of Ed and the town to try to work together to, to address some of their concerns. The reason I was involved with, I was asked to pursue a state grant for the Cox, there's a playground behind the Cox School. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. And, you know, the parents have raised over $50,000 on their own. And it just seems to me, and, you know, in a town like Guilford, if we can't maintain and support our playgrounds, it's really a shame. And it's not that I'm refusing to look for state money. I'm always looking for state money whenever I can help Guilford, but it's not the first time. The Calvin Lee parents have come, and I'm sure they're, you know, the, the playground up at Melissa Jones is, what, about 20 years old now, I believe, or more. So I did have a conversation with, as did Vinnie and Ed, with First Selectman Maza, that we thought maybe Park and Rec would like to work with the Board of Ed and at least have a discussion before the budget's finalized about those things. The other thing on my list was, we have a new law requiring people to clear snow off the top of their vehicles. And I have been behind school buses on their way to Guilford with lots of snow piled on the top. I don't know if the company is not aware, or they just haven't, haven't gotten used to it yet. But, you know, when that comes flying off the back of those buses, it, it lands hard. And you have kids driving to school. And, you know, it's just something I wanted to mention that you might want to just remind the drivers to do. Let's see. So that was kind of what was on my list. I'm, I'm very interested to hear what you would like us to do or not do in relation to Common Core or anything else in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm delighted to hear your talk about all-day kindergarten. Our neighbors to the south in New York City are talking about mandatory pre-K
at both the state level and the city level, in the city and New York.
Is there any discussion in the legislature about pre-K?
Actually, there is. The governor has proposed in his budget to expand the number of pre-K slots in the state of Connecticut to increase the, the money available for care for kids and some of the opportunities for daycare for children and learning experiences. So there were, there were a lot of educational initiatives, really from pre-K right up through college in this budget proposal. So I think those will be received very well.
Dr. Myers, the governor actually proposed 1,002 more slots for pre-K. And he talked in general about a state commitment to access to universal pre-K. The words are really important here. The cost of universal pre-K for, for the state would be enormous. And so he was talking about access, which could mean a combination of private nursery school and public pre-K. So we're now up to over 4,000 slots, which is not a lot. But there's a pretty strong commitment to do that.
Let me just, maybe we can talk a little bit about teacher evaluations for just a minute. I will have to say that I, you know, I've worked here under three different superintendents. And I don't think any of the superintendents that, that we've had in Guilford in the last 15 years thought that teacher eval, the teacher evaluation framework from the state was, was really that important, frankly. This was a, the solution that was passed was, I think maybe the best way to describe it is a solution looking for a problem. It just wasn't a problem for us. We were, there have been teachers that have left our district. There have been teachers that are, that have been, had count, had, had professional development to improve. The remedy, though, that's really, that's been imposed on us is one that will take massive, massive amounts of administrative time. We did some calculations, just rough calculations, in one of our budget meetings with some of the principals, that if you figure that a principal is, is working somewhere around a 2,000-hour year, which is probably a little conservative, but let's just take that for kicks, that somewhere between a quarter and a third of his or her time would solely be based on a component of the teacher evaluation process. It's too much. It's too, and it's not needed. We, we, there are some that do need much more frequent evaluation, some teachers, newer teachers maybe, or teachers that are, that are, that are, that are in need of improvement. We have a very good administrative team. We know who they are. We, we know what the expectations are. We, we think we know how to, how to move forward. This is a, it's a, we, we are asking the Department of Education Department for some substantially more flexibility than we have. We, the idea is great. Now, because if you're going to have, if teachers are going to be treated as professionals and, and entrusted with really the most important assets that the town has, that we have an expectation as a community, particularly as, as, as they are given market pay and, and so forth, that there is going to be a, a meaningful evaluation process. But, but the structure right now is really just substantially more than we need and is not effective in terms of trying to get whatever, what we all want is the, is the most effective teachers in the classroom, and professional development, and training, and work for the teachers that need assistance. So the, to be fair to the department, the reason you're not, you haven't historically got a lot of people from Guilford coming to talk to you is because Dr. Freeman and the administrative team here put together an evaluation program that was at the very limits of what the state would allow us to do in terms of being, being a reasonable, as reasonable as it could be under the framework. A lot of state, a lot of towns just adopted the state framework. We didn't do that. We adopted something much more, with as much flexibility as the state would give us. But we really believe that there's, there are some things that the state could do to just give us some room, particularly for the senior teachers, the teachers who we know are doing a good job. We don't need to evaluate them in room, in classroom observations three times a year. It's just not necessary. Now, somebody else, though, might need more. That's fine, but let, it's okay to trust us to do that, honest.
We do.
You wanted to comment on the Smart Balanced Assessment and the importance to Guilford of that, of having to go through that exercise this year?
I mean, I have my A view on it. Do you want to talk about it first?
Sure. I'd be happy to. You know, Senator Meyer, I think you did a nice job delineating the three different initiatives that are on our plate this year. There's, there's the Common Core state standards. There is the Smarter Balanced Assessment, which will be a tool through which we'll measure how well we're doing, aiming at those standards. And then there was the teacher evaluation. I think that the single biggest mistake that we all made was thinking that we could do all three of these initiatives at the same time. And the fact is, the teacher evaluation, which became the most prescriptive and the most detailed, took precedent and took all of our focus away from those other two components. The Smarter Balanced Assessment is a standardized measure that we've had for a very long time now. We've had Connecticut Mastery Tests. We've had CMT tests. It's an evolution in that standardized assessment. It is going to be ultimately more beneficial to us, because it's not local to Connecticut only. There's going to be a number of others of states that are participating in Smarter Balance. And so when we look at how our students are doing, we'll be able to compare it to a much larger pool. This year, what we were offered was the opportunity to administer the field test, to drop out essentially of the CMT and the CAP one year early, and administer instead the field test. In psychometrics, it is a standard practice to administer a field test before you go to the actual first administration with accountability of any kind of assessment. So this is an opportunity for us to administer the test, and as you said, learn about the test. We'll learn about it locally. These test designers will learn about it at large. They'll be able to determine which items are more valid than others. So they're going to shake out that test. For almost all of our students that we're going to ask to participate, it is also a dry run. It's an opportunity for our students to experience that test setting and to experience the new test items. When, when the scores aren't going to matter for them, it's going to be the first time that we're asking our students to test online, rather than using number-two pencils and bubbling in bubbles. It's going to help our system to learn about our capacity to have students take an online computerized assessment. It's going to help our teachers to become comfortable in administering that assessment. I need to be honest. There aren't benefits for our oldest students who are going to take it. They're going to take it this year, and then they're not going to participate in, in this assessment moving forward. But our choice is to administer it as a district this year, as a field test, or to administer it as a district next year, when it does count. So it is an opportunity for the school system. It's not an opportunity for any individual junior other than to participate and, and allow us to learn through their experience going through that assessment. So I absolutely understand parent concerns about it, but it's a matter of administering this year or waiting and administering next year. As that assessment comes online, there's an interplay. There's a relationship between that state assessment and then those Common Core state standards, which we are, are implementing and shooting towards. The standards are simply the targets to which we aim. We decide locally how we will approach those standards. Again, the biggest mistake that we made was not spending two or three years working with Common Core state standards before also grabbing a new teacher evaluation system and layering that on top. But as we begin to admin, or continue to administer those new standards, the administration of this assessment will help us measure how we're doing. It's going to help us gauge our work as we continue to aim towards those targets. Of the three initiatives that you labeled, the one that I'm most willing to delay, to pause, to slow down, quite honestly, more than anything, to Mr. Bloss's point, I still think there's work to do to restructure some of what we've talked about around teacher evaluation. I think it is too summative. I think it is too much concerned with rating teachers, and it's not concerned enough with being formative and developmental and helping teachers get better. So I think slowing down our work on evaluation, continuing thoughtfully our work with Common Core, and then moving into the Smarter Balanced in the way that is thoughtful and will benefit the entire district the best, those are all decisions that we need to continue to make moving forward.
And what about the, in, in the law we passed, we, we set up four classifications for teachers, as you know, starting with exemplary. Are you helped with respect to teacher development and teacher performance by having those four categories, or is that an impediment?
I think it's an impediment. I think if you think about people who want to grow and be better, I think if you think about the exceptional caliber of teachers that we have in this school system, sorting them and ranking them doesn't help them to grow. Getting into their classrooms and watching their work and helping them to design goals that are informed by student data, those are helpful processes. But when those processes lead towards ranking you and giving you a two or a three for your performance this year, rather than those processes feeding a conversation about how I can be better and more efficient next year, how I can help my students to grow better next year, that gets in the way. And so I think there's opportunities, not to scrap the system, but to create greater flexibilities and to create a system that can be more formative and developmental and less summative and about rating teacher performance. Again, I'll talk about, I know our concerns may be different than other districts in the state, but in our district, it's about striving for excellence and improving our performance every day. And you don't do that by sorting and rating students. We know that in the classroom. You do that by challenging and encouraging them to stretch themselves. The same logic applies to teachers. I think there's work that can be done to continue to improve that system. And I think slowing down to be thoughtful about it is wise. It gives us more time to look at those changes. I, I applauded the commissioner and the governor for the flexibilities that were extended, but I've already encouraged the commissioner to reach for greater flexibilities. The, the flexibilities that were announced in the last couple of weeks don't change our plan in Guilford. We were already at the edge of those flexibilities. So I would like to see greater flexibility, greater latitude, so that we can continue to find ways to support teachers in their work, challenge teachers to grow every year, but not to sort and rate them. I don't see that as helpful in the system, no.
That's very good. Thank you. You know, we're, we're encumbered somewhat, it's going to be a little Judge Mail here, by having a commissioner of education who is not a teacher. He's not an administrator. He has no classroom experience. He's had no school administrative experience. And he happens to be a very good person and a very good communicator. But, you know, he really didn't have much input into what the legislature did, and we could have used a more practical experience, like you're talking about, Dr. Freeman.
Are there questions, comments, thoughts?
We, this is sort of going back towards what Dr. Myers had said. I don't know what the exact numbers are, but I know Connecticut is- I don't know what the exact numbers are, but I know Connecticut is one of few states that allows children to enter kindergarten at four years, eight months, is it?
Correct.
Is there any talk of that changing, especially as we're starting to look at more full-day programs and more increased demands on such young kids?
You know, I'm not aware of any movement. We, this is a very short session. We're only in for three months and we've already been in for a week. Bills are still being proposed and committees are raising bills, but I think to make major policy changes in education in a short session where there isn't a lot of time to really put enough thought into those is, is not a desirable thing to do. So it's possible that something like that could come up, but are you aware of anything like that? I'm not.
I, I would think an issue like that would probably come out in a long session, so maybe the following session. It is something that we've looked at in the past. You know, on a personal note, when my, I have a fall baby and we were debating whether I had to put him into kindergarten early, we called the Superintendent. He had said to us, you know, I've never had a parent regret putting a child in later, but I've always had parents regret putting them into school early. And I think with seeing now Common Core coming to fruition, I, I think the state, we are gonna have to address that issue of the age of a child because emotionally, you know, I don't know if, if a four-year-old is gonna be ready for the rigors of Common Core. And a kindergarten teacher already has a lot on their plate. And if we can't give the support of paras, you know, we, I think we have to look at this issue in the future.
Because you have the potential to have a four-year-old eight months and a six-year-old in a classroom, expected to do the same standards. And if you take that out of it, you take away some of that gamble that parents have to take at that first stage.
Other questions, comments? That's, that's Dr. Moore.
Dr. Moore is blinking.
Dr. Moore, are you blinking or are you trying to say something? Is, are you?
Well, it says he's muted.
Did you wanna make, did you wanna ask a question, Dr. Moore?
Oh, no, thank you very much. I'll, I'll write letters.
I think his headlights just went on, is what happened.
That's it. We do have one more order of business that's a little bit fun. We'd like to acknowledge Dr. Freeman's award that he just received, and we have in his honor a state citation. I will just read it briefly. "In recognition of being named the recipient of the 2014 Alumni Award by the University of Connecticut's Niag School of Education, your hard work on behalf of the students of Guilford since you arrived in 2011 has shown tremendous results and make you most deserving of this honor. So we'd like to, on behalf of the entire legislature, offer our congratulations."
Thank you so much.
That's terrific. Thank you. And I should, actually, I'd like to publicly recognize Representative Whitlitz's work on, on preserving, we were just talking about this at our Finance Committee meeting, preserving the status of the science wing in the high school project and, and not having to, to write the state of Connecticut a check for, oh, I don't know, $600,000, which would've been very hard to do. But Representative Whitlitz carried a substantial weight moving forward to, to resolve that issue. We are very excited that, that we're not going to have to either tear that down or write a check to the state for the science wing. So I wanna publicly thank you for that on behalf of the board and, and look forward to continued service for, for all three.
Thank you very much. My pleasure.
All right.
And we will, we will be inviting our girls' state champions to come to the legislature. So that will, that will be something that's in the works. We wanna make sure we have a date when we know we'll be in session so we can appropriately honor them. We're very excited about that.
Oh, terrific. Make sure you let the Superintendent's Office know that and we can, we can get the word out on.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
All right. So I think what we'll do is, if it's, makes sense to everybody, open and move to item six on the agenda, which is public forum for topics on the board agenda. You all can stay or not stay as you wish. Thank you. It's a public meeting. Anybody wanna address the board on something that's on the agenda?
I'd like to, regarding the legislative update that we just received. My name is Marion Breeze, 42 Arrowhead Drive in Guilford. I'm here regarding the testing. School districts, as Dr. Freeman mentioned, were given two options this year. Option A, administer the legacy CAP test, or option B, administer the Smarter Balance test. Our district went with option B, and this made the most sense since teachers were already starting to implement the Common Core standards. And I stood right here this fall and spoke in full support of that decision. But as it turns out, option B is actually doing more harm than good for our students. And as a parent of an 11th grader, I'd like to explain why. It requires all 10th and 11th graders to spend approximately eight and a half hours taking field tests. And I say approximately because the test has no time limit. Some students will take five hours, some students might take 10 hours. And according to the State Office of Education, I spoke with Gail Pagano, this test provides, as Dr. Freeman said, absolutely no benefit to our 11th graders, but they will be missing out on eight hours of class time. So it's more than just not providing a benefit, it's actually taking away something from our students. Eight and a half, eight to 10 hours out of instructional time, no benefit. I think that's a disservice. And for those who are in AP classes, it takes away time for AP instruction and preparation. An hour ago, I received a call from Mr. Masenti announcing that there is a meeting this Thursday night for parents, and he also announced that he has decided to do the testing in March. That, I'm very concerned about that. It doesn't just impact the 10th and 11th grade. According to our school principal, Mr. Masenti, the entire school population is infect, is affected because of the additional staff time and resources that are required to administer the tests. I also heard this from our middle school principal, Catherine Walker. Mr. Masenti said that the, the test will happen in March, and in past years, AP students used that CAP time when 10th graders were taking the test, the 11th graders would use that extra time to prepare for AP exams. That is now lost to our students. In Greenwich, they have moved the testing to May, to after the AP exams, and they've received a special dispensation from the state to do that. For some reason, we're still not doing that, even in spite of the fact that we lost two more days to snow, two more days of AP class time, two more days that we are going to have at the end of the year to take final exams. So I don't understand why we're not doing it in late May. So I admire and applaud the Board of Ed and our Superintendent for taking a proactive stance in moving forward with Common Core. But option A, the CAP test, and option B, the field testing for all 10th and 11th graders, are just not good choices. We need the state to give us an option C. And here are some ideas. Exempt the 11th graders from taking the field test. The consortium can offer it to a sample of students, or they can do it on a voluntary basis. This would also reduce some of the impacts on our high school resources. 11th graders could take it for community service hours, because that's what this is. This is community service that we're asking our 11th graders to do when it doesn't benefit them and it takes away their class time. At the very least, the state can ensure Connecticut's AP students aren't penalized. Let's follow Greenwich's example statewide. They aren't testing 11th graders until late May, we shouldn't be either. Better yet, let's save our money and resources at the state and local level, put testing on hold until these and many other issues are worked out, and move forward with it next year. Think about how much staff time and resources are still needed at every school and every district in this state to implement field tests this year. Imagine what our teachers could do with an extra eight to 10 hours of instructional time with our students. To Dr. Freeman's point, this fall, when student, when schools were implementing Common Core standards and the teacher evaluation process was happening, it affected everyone. It affected teachers, I saw it affect the students and the administrators, and it took away valuable time and resources. Field testing is adding to that deficit this year. Our high school's mission is to focus on learning. This is a learning opportunity for all of us. Let's make some adjustments so we, as a school community, can stay true to our mission. Thank you.
Is there any, anybody wanna ask any follow-up questions on any of that or make any comments? No? Okay. Well, there is a meeting Thursday night.
Yes.
Where is it? Here?
It's here at the high school for Mr. Masenti and his team to give details about what the schedule would look like and some of the concerns about impact are, are items that he's prepared to speak to.
Now, I, I will say, one of the, you know, without getting into a whole big talk again about Common Core, the, the state really could have been substantively, I, I happen to think it's not bad, and, and for a couple of reasons. One is that it's, it's very rigorous. It, it sets goals, it sets standards that I think we, we ought to have developed by somebody outside the district, setting, setting a high bar. And I think it's also exciting for Connecticut that we're gonna stop this, this charade that we had under No Child Left Behind, where every state was able to adopt its own standards and, and so that, that states with a, with a much different public education system than ours wind up doing, scoring the same and being treated as the same by the federal government because they had, they had put, they had made their, their statewide standards very different from our statewide standards. The, the positive thing about Common Core is that it allow, a positive thing about it is it does allow an honest comparison, state to state, and actually even internationally, if, if there are, if there are schools that choose to do that internationally. So if we are trying to get an honest idea about really where we are in Guilford and where we are in Connecticut compared to the districts that are preparing the, the students that are gonna compete with our students, then this is a productive way to do it. Now, there are, obviously, there are going to be difficulties with it and, and then it's, this transition is very hard for us. It is, it's challenging. It's challenging for parents, it's challenging for students, it's challenging for teachers and the administrators as well. So we're gonna, we're gonna, we, we just hope that, that the message that you'll hear from us is, is just let us work it out. We'll, we'll, we can do it. Just give us some room. We, we think that, we think that we are best able to kind of try to solve the, the challenges that we're facing here locally and, and we appreciate everything that you're doing at the, at the statewide level in that respect.
You know, there's a common word in the last dialogue, and that's flexibility. We're asking for flexibility from the state in terms of the administration of teacher evaluation, and a parent is asking us and you for flexibility in the smarter balance, or timing of the smarter balance thing. And I think we have to be sensitive to both flexibilities and that we want to be flexible. So I urge the state to be flexible with our questions and I urge the school administration to be flexible with what the parents are, some parents are asking for.
Just, just know, Dr. Myers, that, that the state legislature, the Connecticut General Assembly has not appropriated that power. It has the power to do that, but the Common Core and its assessment, the Smarter Balance Assessment, has never been presented to us. It has been, it's been an administrative thing, not a legislative function.
I got you.
Is it appropriate to ask a follow-up question?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Which is, what did Greenwich do and are we in a position to consider that?
I, I know.
I, I, just for full disclosure, I am also a parent of a junior, and they are, they are taking ACT and SATs and APs and it's really, really unfortunate that they are field testing this this year.
I know that Mr. Masenti and his team have spoken to Greenwich and they've talked with them about the decisions that they have made. I'm not prepared to talk about the specifics of, of our details only because I'm not fully up to speed with those. Mr. Masenti is going to talk about that when he has his meeting this Thursday evening. I'll add weather permitting. So I, I can speak to you more fully about that, but I just didn't come to tonight's meeting prepared to be able to speak to those details or that level of detail around this. There is flexibility in the window. The state has provided us a fairly lengthy window within to, to assess, and the high school has made what they felt was the best decision to fit that test into a very tight timeframe. But again, I don't have those details at my disposal this evening and I apologize for that.
Are there other public comments for items on the agenda?
Clerk Kincaid Dunn, 895 Maple Hill Road. I'm here tonight to represent the 400-plus residents of Guilford who fully support a budget that consists of a full-day kindergarten program. You have heard our testimonials during the public hearing and through numerous emails. So tonight, we're here to thank the Board of Ed, Dr. Freeman and his team for all their effort to deliver the town of Guilford a budget that falls under a 3% increase and that will benefit our youngest citizens. Our team, that consists of all walks, have already begun and will continue a grassroots coalition to bring these 400-plus voters to the polls and strongly encourage you tonight to vote yes on this budget. Thank you.
Are there public comments on agenda items? Okay. Then, I'm totally lost as to where we are now. Let's, let's do the minutes. Minutes can go later, the bills can go later. Let's, let's just work, if, if that's okay with everybody, why don't we just get to the Superintendent's report? Thank you very much for joining us and good luck and hard work.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, let's just go, communications, I mean, we all got a multitude of communications regarding the budget and specifically mostly around full-day kindergarten. And we can talk about that as we wish during comments on whatever the, the budget presentation is.
I did have a couple of other comments.
Did you?
Related, if, if this is the time to.
That's fine.
So just as a quick follow-up, I, I did have a couple of parents concerned, parents of juniors concerned about the Smarter Balance. I also did get, or was part of, an email communication from Mrs. Manone, who's a first-grade teacher at Lakes. She copied a number of us, as I believe she emailed directly Mrs. Hale and, who is a principal at Lakes, just really enthusiastic about the math night that they had at the school, that it sounded like 100 parents showed up to math night, that they went through a number of math problems, exercises, parents really got to see what Common Core was all about. It was just really exciting to, to be on the receiving end of a communication from a teacher who was so excited about this kind of neat math night that they had. So I just wanted to share that as well.
We were particularly excited because it was not either Dr. Keen or I standing up telling people what Common Core was all about. It was a night for students and parents to be together and engage in math activities, some that are related to our work with Common Core and some that are just part of the math that they do in their classroom every day and have been doing under our local curriculum. So I'm sorry that I missed it. It sounded like it was a wonderful night.
All right. Well, why don't we then, any other communications? Then why don't we go to item nine on the agenda, Superintendent's report?
Sure. I really just have, I really just have one item to share with you all tonight and want to simply make an effort to summarize the work that we've all done together since we brought our administrative budget to you here at the board level. And in an effort to do that, I have gone back to the slides that we used originally. So through a series of presentations, public hearings, deliberations, rescheduled meetings, we have worked on our budget. Without going over all of this again, I'll remind the board and the community that our budget is built on our vision for our school system, our mission that we have set ourselves, the local priorities that the board set for this year as we work moving forward, a set of budget priorities that the administrative team compiled for ourselves to help us filter and to help guide every decision that we made. And ultimately, by a realistic look at our enrollment, only budgeting for those students who will be in class with us next year, we project to have flat enrollment moving from this year into next year. All of that being said, the administrative budget that we originally brought to this board was a budget request for $56,933,248, an increase over the current budget year of $2,388,62, or an increase of 4.38%, just below 4.5%. In the weeks that we have been working on this budget collaboratively, this board has made a series of adjustments to that budget request, most significantly working with the town and with our insurance broker, bringing the initial insurance cost down some $600,000. Additionally, this board looked thoughtfully and carefully at the full-day K proposal and looking at the para support that we will be offering, we looked carefully at para support. We will be providing part-time para support in the full-day K, and because of that, we're able to make an insurance adjustment in that line. There was a request for increased custodial support, which we have agreed to back off, where I had initially, I had initially suggested increasing by two custodians across the school system. We're gonna remove one of those. We're going to remove one of those with salary and benefits. That's a reduction of $77,000. We've looked more carefully at how we are paying our technology lease, and we've been able to back off $20,000 in that line item. And while we talked a little bit about the weight of the evaluation process here this evening already, we have talked about putting money into the budget for administrative supports, the opportunity to possibly bring in outside evaluators, experienced educators, experienced administrators who could come in to support our principals. This is not a hire. We're looking to have this money set aside to contract that, and these monies will only be spent if necessary. If there are additional flexibilities, if there are additional latitudes that are offered, and if we can modify our plan moving forward to be less onerous and to be something that we can conduct in-house successfully, these monies might not need to be expended, but at this moment, I feel they're necessary. That's a net adjustment to our budget or the proposed administrative budget. It's a net reduction of $768,871. For a side-to-side comparison, we began some weeks ago with a 4.38% increase, and after the work that we've done together, after the careful look that this board has taken, we now stand tonight with those summarized changes at a 2.97% increase, below 3% increase. I want to remind, again, without going through these individually, but I want to remind the board and the community that this budget is built on efficiencies. We have worked hard to control salaries. Salaries are the single largest expenditure in any school budget. We have worked carefully in how we place staff members. We've looked at enrollment adjustments. This board negotiated what I think is a fair and reasonable contract with both teachers and the administrative associations moving forward, and we have been able to take advantage of two years of retirements and thoughtful hiring to bring talent to our district, but at a lower cost than those outgoing veteran teachers. We've worked with transportation. We have negotiated a very favorable renewal contract with our transportation company. And by being able to reduce the need for special education buses and for possibly half-day kindergarten buses, we have generated efficiencies there as well. I do want to note that in the area of special education, I'm incredibly proud of this team to point out that we are serving our students better by keeping them in their home schools, but generating an efficiency in this area alone of over $800,000. This budget also includes investments, however. We didn't simply work to keep the cost down. We worked to improve the quality. This budget, at just below 3%, does include full-day kindergarten for every child in the school system at a cost of just below half a million dollars. It includes an increased math coach, continued to invest in the professional development, the local embedded job, job embedded professional development that we know helps improve performance. It includes monies to step back and bring in outside eyes to look critically at us and at the work we do, specifically studies that will target the ways that we support our highest-achieving students, and an extended enrollment projection. It includes monies for professional development and possible application fees for the idea of an international baccalaureate program at our high school. I want to point out that this is not a commitment to an international baccalaureate program at this time. It continues our ability to study that opportunity and to look at the idea of layering another challenging program in at our high school level so that students will continue to stretch and to achieve at high levels. It includes a continued investment in our facilities, an additional $39,000 in maintaining the buildings that we have and keeping them in proper working order. And as I said earlier, we are asking to increase by one custodial position. A total investment package, a total package of new spending of $799,000, just a little bit less of what we identified as the efficiency that was generated in the special education work this year. I've detailed what the cost of that kindergarten investment would be. As the single largest investment in this budget, it is worth breaking out and noting that the single most, largest component of this is in the teacher salaries, paraprofessional salaries, some limited classroom furnitures, additional instructional materials, professional development for the teachers. There's a savings in transportation for a total cost of $462,500. To highlight staffing, if you look at the certified line, the teaching staffing with full-day K will be asking for an increase of six teachers, an additional math coach, and an additional special education teacher, we're asking to increase eight teachers this year. But we have offsetting teacher reductions due to enrollment declines of two and a half positions. So while we do ask to go up eight teachers, we're reducing two and a half in other lines. This is an adjustment from the earlier items that we showed you. We had previously showed an increase of a .5 coordinator for the IB program and decreasing at the high school by two. We're showing it to you differently this year. We backed out the cost of the IB coordinator, but we're showing it out of current staffing rather than carrying it as a cost. It's a different way of looking at it than what we had in your slides previously. I apologize for that slide. That should say one custodian. I failed to update that. We're looking to increase by one custodian, and we're looking to increase by 12 halftime paraprofessionals in kindergarten. It's a halftime paraprofessional per classroom for a total of six. This budget does include an investment in staffing. We are going to have more people working with the students in the school system next year, 12 of those positions related specifically to the decision whether or not to include full-day kindergarten. Finally, it leaves as the single largest decision for this Board of Education to adopt the budget tonight with the changes that we have already discussed that I have summarized for you. It would be a budget, including all the investments that I've detailed, built on the efficiencies that I've detailed of 2.97%. Should this board choose to go forward with this budget but to eliminate the full-day kindergarten component, it would be a budget of 2.12%. And I'll close the way I always close these conversations, and Mr. Blos continues to say it more articulately than I, but we have an incredibly strong school system. I would put the performance of Guilford Public Schools up against any other Connecticut school system by any measure. Our performance on athletic fields, on the performing stage, our college placements, our performance on any standardized measure, old or new, we do well. We continue to do well for our students. We do it in a changing environment. We heard tonight with our legislators how disruptive the educational environment is right now. On alternate days, I view it as stressful or the most exciting period of my career. It is one or the other. But we continue to protect our students, to serve our students, and to stretch our students in this changing environment, and we continue to do it at an unparalleled value. We are at the lowest rung of DURG B. Socioeconomically, we don't necessarily compete with all of the other towns that are recognized as DURG A or B schools. But when you look at the performance of our students, not only do we compete, we compete well. Our students perform exceptionally well for the investment that we make in them. I appreciate all of the time and effort that has gone into this budget, and during the deliberation phase of your agenda, we'll have time to talk about the changes that I've summarized here and finalize your budget moving forward to this town.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, you know, after a couple of other agenda items, we'll actually get on to the board agenda with the board's budget. Do you want to just do a brief update on the retreat, the Board of Ed retreat?
Yes, just to remind everybody, I apologize for the reschedule. I think considering our budget schedule, it probably made sense, but we will continue to work to reschedule that board retreat. I'm excited about the agenda that we put together for the day. I don't know that it makes sense to try to find a date today, but I'll ask Mrs. Fiandella to keep working with all of us to find a date sooner rather than later, if that's possible. I just didn't want to allow it to slip off the agenda.
Okay. Item 10 on the board agenda is, first item is to act on some personnel items, and then the second item is to act on our proposed 2014-15 budget. Now, one of the agenda items on the personnel items part concerns a retirement, and the target, or the subject of that retirement, not target, subject. Did just walk into the room, and I would like to ask Mrs. Bishop, please, to come up to the podium. The first item, the first item on our board agenda under this is to ratify the resignation of Nancy Bishop as the principal at Lead Elementary School after 19 years of service to the town of Guilford. Is there a motion to that effect?
Sadly, yes.
And I'd like to second it with mixed emotions.
Is there, are there any comments, discussion? I'm sure there are people that would just as soon vote against this.
We were allowed to do so.
Are there comments?
Nancy, you've made my time, I'm going to cry saying it, at Calvin League the best it could be, and I'm only sad that you won't be there for the last year, that my third one is there. And it certainly made the transition to elementary school easier for us.
Thank you, and it's been my pleasure to serve with you as the president.
I would like to say I've had the pleasure of working with Nancy on the wellness committee over the last year or two, and have, my children were not at Calvin League, but have only ever heard very, very, very positive feedback from any parent of any child who has been within your school. And working with you was such a pleasure.
Oh, thank you.
Your dedication and your commitment and, and your genuine enjoyment of what you do clearly, clearly is felt by anyone who has been, worked with you or been a student within your school or a parent of a student within your school. So, thank you for what you have provided.
I'd like to second what Katie said. We've been on various committees in the last eight years together, and I will miss you terribly. On the positive side, you and I have had long chats about travel and the adventures of travel, and I know you're looking forward to travel. So I feel good that you and your husband are going to get to do that. I feel bad that I can't join you on travel.
Well, you know, this is your part, because there's so many places I need to go that you've been. Thank you very much.
We'll all miss that warm smile, but I hope you bring it back in the room.
Thank you.
I just, I can't.
Speaking for the administrative team, I know that we're going to miss Nancy's professionalism. I know that we're going to miss the positive attitude that she brings into the room every day that we're working on an item together. I know that we're going to miss her care for all of us individually. Personally, coming to a new school district is intimidating, and Nancy, from the first day, opened her door to me, offered to share her experiences in the community, offered to listen, support. I'm going to miss working with you, Nancy.
Thank you, and I'm going to miss you so much, too, and Anna and Jason, all of you. May I say a few words?
Please.
Okay. This is hard, because it's really, really difficult to walk away from something you truly love, and I truly love being the principal of Calvin League School. I think that does show on my face every day, and it's hard to talk about it. But I reflect back, and almost two decades ago, I was hired in this room, and I was arriving here. I actually came in at midnight from Washington, DC, and I came to this town that I wanted to work in so badly, and I felt so fortunate to be hired. And I feel really lucky that 20 years later, I can say that I'm still so proud to work here and feel so fortunate. I'm humbled by the experiences I've had because it's been a wonderful, wonderful experience. But I'm 20 years older than I was then, so it is time to travel and read and just enjoy being with my husband, but I am truly, truly going to miss working here. So thank you all for the experience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So a motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Second item on the personnel agenda is the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Diane Mott, who is a world language teacher at Adams Middle School. Is there a motion to ratify that resignation?
Second.
Questions, discussion, again, in very long service.
Yeah, I would also like to note with thanks and appreciation for her long service to the students of Guilford School.
35 years?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? And then finally, ratification of an appointment of a teacher, Evangelia, I assume that's not Evangeline, is that spelled right?
I believe it is.
All right. Evangelia Kraus, English teacher for Guilford High School, starting, I guess she started already, started a week ago. All in favor of ratifying that appointment, or I'm sorry, a motion to ratify that appointment? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, thank you very much. That takes care of that agenda item. Now we move on to the budget. And I, you know, I just want to preface this by saying, I don't think that there's ever been a time that we have been more, that we've started earlier. We started before two of the people on the board were even on the board in developing this budget. It's been, I think we've had a more meetings with administrators, we've had more meetings with teachers, we've had more meetings with the public. I think at least four sessions for public input. I think that we probably have received more emails, phone calls, letters and so forth on this particular budget than any other, I think, certainly in recent years. So I'm very, and I think that Dr. Freeman and the administrative team, you've done a very good job at continuing with the kind of work that we've tried to do in the past, as well as try to, as you call them, investments, try to make some, some positive changes to try to improve the quality of education in the district. We, I, we've, we can proceed in a few different ways right now. We've, we can either just consider general comments on the budget, or if there is a motion to remove any specific line item from the budget, that might be the most appropriate way to go now. Because I, one thing we don't want to do, I think, as a board, is to, is to not have a full discussion publicly, particularly about full-day kindergarten, because that is a big expense. And it's something that we have thought about for, I didn't realize that, I've learned tonight that Representative Whitlitz was, we had a pilot program here in the 80s? All right, well, that's news to me. I didn't know that. So happy to learn that, but it is a big issue. It is a big issue, obviously. We've got a lot of community input on it, and do want to make sure that it is at least, we believe the right thing to do at this time and under whatever circumstances, or not. Or if there are other budget items, I know Dr. Myers has mentioned that this $50,000 potential add-in for complimentary evaluations, do we really need that depending on what happens with the state with the evaluation program? And, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with the evaluation program, so if, that would come under the heading that if we do include that, that if you ultimately didn't need it, you can turn that back.
Right. I would only be worried not to include it and then find ourselves in the situation of coming up short next year. And it's a matter of supporting our administrative team. They've worked hard to build, well, collaboratively as a district, with teachers and administrators together, we've built a system that we think is fair and reasonable and meets some of the concerns that I expressed, is in fact formative. But it's a heavy lift, and I want to make sure that we have the ability to support them next year as they make that lift. I would love not to need it, but I would hate to find ourselves needing it and not have it to go to.
So let's defer full-day kindergarten for just a second. Are there any other budget items that people think that are, that they have questions about or concerns?
Just a clarification, and I think I've heard you correctly, but the IB coordinator position has just been moved here, right? I mean, is that still?
Yes, it's still in the budget. I tried to report it differently tonight to give the board a different way to look at it. Initially, we had reported it as a new cost associated with IB.
Right.
And that's how it's reported on the five-year breakout that you have in front of you.
Right.
And then, at the same time, we carried an unassociated reduction of FTEs at the high school of 2.0.
Right.
So to give us a different way to think about that tonight, I eliminated it as a new cost, which would bring the cost of IB down to only $45,000 related to fees and professional development, and then showed the reduction at the high school as only 1.5. The IB coordinator will still be new to the high school next year. It is still in the budget, but we chose to show it tonight as coming out of existing staffing rather than as being represented as a new cost and having an offsetting reduction that balanced it. It's two different ways of presenting the same information.
But it's an, but it's essentially, it's an IB cost, though?
Yes.
Otherwise, that teacher would be teaching-
Something else, yes.
Something else.
Absolutely.
And we do have some decisions to make about IB moving forward, and whether we want to make, I think that probably the key time is this next year, whether do we want to make a commitment to doing it? And I understand there's a little bit of a chicken and an egg situation, you know? Do you have the coordinator who actually has the background and the training and the expertise so that he can or she can lead the community conversation? Or do you wait to have the community conversa, first have the community conversation, then hire the coordinator? It's a fair question.
Yes, and to some degree, this budget attempts to split that baby. I would be remiss if I didn't say that IB strongly encourages schools at this point to have a full-time coordinator shepherding that process. And I know that Mr. Masenti would very much like to see a full-time position- And I know that Mr. Masenti would very much like to see a full-time position. And in this budget, I only felt confident moving it forward as a half-time position at this stage. We're still exploring, we're still looking to see, and we have between now and next year to make a couple important decisions. Will we move forward with formal application to the IB process? That can't happen before we have a richer conversation with our community. Parents need to be involved in that conversation, parents of current high school students who understand the current process, and really, most importantly, parents of current middle school students who would be coming to the high school when this opportunity becomes an option for them, should it become an option for them. At that same time, we would need to discuss the idea of maintaining a part-time coordinator or increasing to a full-time coordinator, or determining if, unlike any other district, we could go forward without that position as a need. But again, I think we need to learn more about IB before we can determine whether we were ready to make that application. I will note that by changing the way we show the monies in this budget, we focus on the professional development monies. And I can say, without hesitation, that the professional development related to the International Baccalaureate Program will be beneficial and will be a positive learning experience for our staff, whether or not we choose to go forward. It is some of the highest-rated, best-reviewed professional development that high school teachers can engage in. And whether or not we formally pursue IB opens our teachers up to an international perspective that much of the local professional development we've done in the past hasn't. So, you know, I think it's a good investment in year one. It continues the conversation, it continues to afford us the opportunity, and it enriches the instruction at the high school either way.
Is it your intention that this half-time coordinator would be a new employee that is trained in IB, or is this somebody who would be repositioned within the high school?
We would need to post and allow folks to apply, but I think most likely, you might see one of our veteran staff members who would be interested in this. We have budgeted the position as a new hire. Should one of our veteran experienced teachers apply and be selected for that position, those classes that become uncovered would be covered by a younger, less experienced teacher at a lower cost. But until we go through the actual posting and interview process, there's no way to answer definitively. It's been budgeted as a lower-cost position for that reason, for that thinking.
I would like to comment just on the whole issue of the investment in the high-achieving students. We, as a board attendant, listened to many parents who addressed us last year about the need for increased programming, specifically in math, but in many other areas, for high-achieving students. Around that time, we also commissioned a study of special ed students and programs, and that resulted in a wonderful change in our approach, and, as you pointed out, savings. I see the study that you're proposing for high-achieving students, and what we're talking about investing in the International Baccalaureate together as beginning to address the needs of high-achieving students, one at the high school level, but in general, we need the others. So I'm fully in favor of this. Dr. Moore, who is still there, yep, and I attended a seminar at Wesleyan College last year on the needs of high-achieving students, and it was incredibly informative. We have a lot of work left to do on this, and I think that IB is one approach, and whatever comes out of the study will be another approach, so I'm fully in support of this.
Other questions or other comments about anything in specific? Does anybody want to make any motions that we, to remove any items from Dr. Freeman's proposal?
I do.
Go ahead.
This is very hard to say, but I have to say this, in the conversation about full-day kindergarten, and I so respect and admire those of you who have put so much energy into this campaign, I'll call it, and the administrators who presented the plan. I have so much respect for the process, but I can't, personally can't get past the fact that there really is no evidence that I've seen that there would be any long-term improvements in achievement for the students here in our community in Guilford. And for that reason, I've been very on the fence about this. I've been leaning one way, leaning another way, as I know a lot of you have been. But this is a change that would be so dramatic and so permanent, and expensive, of course, that for me, leaning toward it isn't enough of a reason to really be able to support it. And I do also have concerns about whether it is the right thing for the youngest of our learners. As Mrs. Sullivan brought up earlier, we do have children in the community who are old enough to be legally going to school, but wouldn't be able to thrive in this environment, and there doesn't seem to be any alternative for them. I'm just not convinced that it's the right thing. The argument that I keep coming back to is the fact that a two-and-a-half-hour kindergarten day is not enough for our kids to do what we expect of them. And I know that that's true. I mean, my children, my oldest, I have a 14-year spread in my kids, and to me, the difference between what the kindergarten experience was like 20 years ago and what it was like five years ago, it's just incredible. And I know that trend has continued, and we do ask a lot of them. But when I hear comments like, one of our legislators commented, how the expectations have been ratcheted up, and I just think they're four and five years old and we're ratcheting up the expectations, it doesn't sit right with me. I don't think that the dust has settled on the Common Core, it's still very new, and to think that there won't be changes, I think is naive. And I feel much better voting on this a little far into the future, perhaps, when we've seen how things have worked out in Madison, a community very much like us that just put the program in place. I feel more comfortable voting for it in the future.
Okay, so you're moving to remove that line item from the budget?
I am, yes.
Okay, so is there a second to that motion? I'll tell you what, I will second it for the purposes of the discussion, all right? Because I really don't want to cut the discussion short. I think it's a fair discussion, there are reasonable people that can have differences of opinion on this, as far as I'm concerned. So I will second it for the purposes of the motion. Other comments on the motion?
I have a slightly different, but similar version. Excuse me if I look like I'm reading, because I am. I don't object to a full-day program for kindergarten, I object to the amount of academic pressure we're putting on four- and five-year-olds. That being said, I am neither king or queen, as it may be, and the town of Guilford should decide on their own what we should do. As I said last week at our meeting, nothing would make me happier than to sit here in 18 months' time and see that our youngest students are less stressed, learning more, and requiring less social work and support services. I hope that with input from teachers, elementary and preschool, administration and community, a schedule will be developed that considers the need for play and social skills over increased academics at this age.
Mr. Casey?
You know, we received so many materials and so much input, and the process was terrific for helping me educate myself. I look back to the first budget meeting, my notes from October, when we looked at the potential schedule for the kindergarten schedule. And I've gone through that, and I'll talk about some of the thoughts and concerns I had along the way in a moment, but I've returned back to the same document that we got at that first meeting, which was the schedule of the kindergarteners and the current schedule. And truly, just looking at it, and I understand we might hear some firsthand observational experience from one of our colleagues, it's frenetic. It strikes you as an assembly-line process. It's starting at 9:00 and ending at 11:44. There's a morning meeting, and then there's reader's workshop, 30 minutes, 30 minutes writer's workshop, 30 minutes math, 30 minutes science, 30 minutes related arts, and then four minutes to pack up and dismiss. You know, I can't imagine that being the way that we would be educationally best-serving our youngsters at that age. Of course, there's been draft curriculum on the full-day kindergarten, and that's a work in progress, but for sure, there is more breaks that I see for socializing, for just being a kid, and these are, you know, absolutely important. And then we have the overlay of additional demand, so I'm pretty confident that our administration is not going to use the additional time as putting in more than kids could and should handle. I have a sense of just a little, it's a little bit more of a relaxed pace and be able to be accomplished.
Dr. Myers? I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna say, I shares many of the concerns that Ms. Renner spoke of, and looking through the studies, you know, we all have them electronically or in print, that one study by Cooper that did a survey of everything has two tables, the potential positive effects, potential negative effects. And if you look at that table, clearly, 75% of the positive effects are not appropriate for our community. They're, they're, they show that it would be beneficial for communities in a more economically difficult situation. I don't think that there really is much support we could point our finger to, to say that at least beyond third grade, that there really is a benefit that's gonna be long-lasting. But I don't see that as the right item to focus on. The right item to focus on is the quality of the day for our students now, and I just think we need to give them more time. It can't be accomplished in the current time. So I won't be voting in favor of the amendment.
Dr. Myers?
Well, before I talk about my own views, Mrs. Dudley, who could not be here tonight, asked me to read a very brief statement about all-day kindergarten. She says, "Hi, all. I will not be at Monday's meeting, but I wanted to express my hope that the budget you send on to the Board of Finance includes the full support for all-day kindergarten. We owe it to the teachers who are willing to admit that they cannot cover adequately the material expected of them in the short time period of two-and-a-half hours. We owe it to the many parents who came to us and expressed the need for more time for these kids to grasp the curriculum and still have time for play and socialization that is so important during the first year of school. But most of all, we owe it to those little kids to have the most successful and happy first year, which sets the stage for the remainder of their school years. It's the right thing to do and the right time to do it. Thanks, Barbara." My own view is that, having sat on this board for eight-plus years, with the exception of the discussions and debate around whether or not we should build a new Guilford High School, this has received the most community import that I've ever experienced. Looking back, in October, there was the teachers, as Mrs. Dudley said, who admitted that they're under stress, they can't get their work done and the time allotted. I know, as a pediatrician, that when adults are under stress, children are under stress, and something has to be done to relieve that stress. Two is, I remember the sea of green that surrounded us when we had a public hearing of parents who eloquently argued, for the most part, for all-day kindergarten. And in the last few days, I have received, and I'm sure the rest of us similarly, 64 emails in favor of all-day kindergarten and five emails opposed to all-day kindergarten. So being an elected official, being responsible to the community, listening to what the community is saying, I am all in favor of all-day kindergarten, and I'm sad that Mrs. Renner and I are on separate sides. As soon as this vote is over, we will hug and be on the same side. I know that. Space precluded us doing this last year, finances precluded it, and thanks to the hard work of Paul, Jason, Linda, and especially Jenny Brown, we can now afford to do all-day kindergarten. So my vote, Mrs. Renner, is no for the amendment and yes for the budget.
Dr. Alice Dresch.
Yes, I have to say that I really respect Mrs. Renner's opinion on this, though I don't entirely agree. And I respect it because, as a researcher who has looked at a fair amount of the research that appears to be out there in the field on all-day versus half-day kindergarten, the research is really inconclusive. The studies do not show much of an academic gain past the end of kindergarten. The studies, none of them are randomized control trials, so none of them reach kind of the gold standard of what we look at in research. And yet, that doesn't mean that full-day kindergarten doesn't offer those extended benefits beyond the end of kindergarten. It means that the research just simply can't tell us either way. I'm concerned that, among other things, the research beyond kindergarten doesn't measure what's happening in first grade and second grade and third grade for these same children. So we don't really know, when we see no change in fifth grade, what that means. And so, making a decision based on the research that exists, for me, is tough, because it really doesn't tell us much. However, I think that what we know, and what I am, not being a teacher, learning about Common Core expectations for our kindergartners, certainly suggests that much more is being asked of them than has been in the past, that we are being told by our teachers that, our kindergarten teachers, that they cannot accomplish what needs to be accomplished in the time that they have now. We're hearing from first-grade teachers that they have kids coming to them who are not prepared. We have heard from at least one of our elementary school social workers who is feeling that the increased behaviors that she is seeing may be partially, at least due to this kind of need to pack more in in a shorter day. I could not agree more with Mrs. Sullivan. I really think we need to proceed with caution, whether we do keep half-day or go to full-day, in keeping an eye on these kids and what the state is saying we should be expecting of them, and what Common Core state standards are saying we should be expecting of them, and not getting swept up and losing sight and taking our eye off this. I have some experience in child development, and I would love to see a two-thirds or a three-quarter day, if we could do that. And financially, that's not really just a viable option for us. So, given that, and given also, I like the way Mrs. Sullivan put it, you know, I do think that the community input, as we have heard it, suggests that this should be a decision that's made by the community, and so I am willing to vote for keeping full-day kindergarten in this budget.
Mr. Sands?
Well, I agree with my colleagues on the board, with the possible exception of Mrs. Renner. I think this is a time of great change in the educational environment, and as Katie's pointed out, we're about to ask a great deal more of children. And to do that and still hold with the very compressed schedule that we have in our half-day program strikes me as being not the right way to go for the students. I'm also taking, I also take very much into account the input we had from the kindergarten and first-grade teachers, and also from some of the administrators who have been in other districts which have had full-day kindergarten. districts which have had full-day kindergarten. And that input was very consistent that, in this changing environment we're in, that the teachers need more time to accomplish what we're asking of them. And I don't see it as my role on the Board of Education to tell the teachers and these administrators that they're wrong and that they should do something else. I think we need to listen to their professional judgment on this. So I'm completely in support of it. And I think that if we pass this and we get support from the Board of Finance, it will be up to the town. And I think that, given the enthusiasm that we've seen so far from the supporters of full-day kindergarten, I'm fairly confident with that outcome will be.
All right, well, let me summarize, I think we're, I, like Ms. Renner, have changed my position, frankly, over the course of time. I started off kind of leaning against, I'll have to say, back in October, and I was like, the case hasn't been made about why we should do this. Then I became, I guess, ambivalent, as I started to work a little more on it. And actually, now I am quite comfortable to vote yes on this. I have turned around on this for a few different reasons. One is, I've read the research, we've all read studies, and I think that the fundamental, there are two fundamental problems with the research in trying to make a decision on a level, at our level. The first is that it's very easy to quantify the costs. We know exactly the cost, and we know the cost of the dollar. And we can look it up, we can, you know, you add the pairs, you add, we know all that. It is harder to quantify in a precise way the benefit. So you have to go back to these studies, and you have to say, well, you know, what is, how does the benefit outweigh the cost? Well, I start off with a couple of facts that I think, I cannot, I know people get tired of me saying this during budget season, but I'm sorry, I'm gonna keep doing it, because they are facts, and they are facts that are prepared by the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management, called the Municipal Fiscal Indicators. These are a little out of date. They're gonna release a new one, but I have no reason to think that this, that it's gonna be any different. Our debt in Guilford is 1% of our equalized net grand list, which is 50% less than the state average. Our per capita income is 21st in the state. Our equalized mill rate is 122nd in the state. Our current adjusted tax levy per capita, tax levy per capita, 46th in the state. Our per-student spending on education is 84th in the state, 84th. That's, and $400 below the average. This, if we approve full-day kindergarten, that will add $25 per student, district-wide, to that number. So I think that when we talk about cost and benefit, we have to be honest about where we are with our costs. And the fact remains that we have, for years, delivered a quality education system program at a relatively low cost compared to comparable districts. There are other problems, issues, I guess, as I read the studies. One is, they can't control for the difference between an effective full-day kindergarten program and just an all-day kindergarten program, right? There's, that was never controlled for in any of the tests. I have an extraordinarily high degree of confidence that our administration is going to deliver and put together, in consultation with teachers and parents and other community members, a quality program. We have no reason to expect otherwise, based on what they've done with the special education program, with the foreign language program, with the AP program, with the kind of strides that we're making here at the high school, and really at all of the schools. So I have to credit that we are not going to be just doing six and a half hours of daycare at the elementary schools. I'm quite confident of that. I do read some of the research that says that maybe we're trying to measure the wrong thing when we're looking at some of these research studies. Are we trying to measure academic achievement? Or are we trying to measure things like development of language skills, like social interactions that have a long-term impact on achievement? That the research shows that full-day kindergarten contributes to children's development, developing social competence. Though, all those, about to take, are you out of time?
I don't know, something more like this.
Okay. Okay. Why don't we take a short break, then? You need to, okay. Okay. All right, we're back with a technological fix, and it'd be, I will not be starting over. I will try to pick up from roughly where I was. So I think we were talking about the research, and I just don't want to expect more out of the research than the research shows. On the other hand, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't have the belief that it shows either neutrality or nothing, because of my confidence that the administration is going to deliver a very positive program. We have, did get some questions from people about how detailed the class schedule is that we have been given to us as part of the process up to this point. Again, the administration has been very open, and I think very honest, about committing to a rollout and a development of the schedule that includes parents, teachers, members of the community. That is no different, by the way, than the other programs that we've asked the administration to roll out, like the autism program in our earliest schools, like the foreign language program, grades one through four. So I'm confident that with an open process, the administration is going to be able to develop a meaningful program. We, as a board, I think, have been very clear with you about what our expectations are, and that this cannot be, this has to be a substantive program, and we fully expect it will be. And what you've done up to this point, I think, has led us to believe that that can happen. But something, I did something today that I haven't done since John F. Kennedy was president, and that is, I went to kindergarten. I went to a class in Melissa Jones' school today, and I sat in on a class taught by the woman who taught my children at Melissa Jones' school back several years ago. My impression of what that class was like, and it was a class of sixteen children, so it's about the ballpark of what we're talking about, there was no para. The one word I think I could describe that experience as is sprint. It was from one thing to the next, to the next, to the next, to the next, snack time, the next, the next. And the snack time was actually while she was reading, so it wasn't even a break. When the kids went down to PE, today was their PE day for special, I stayed in the room and talked to the teacher for a little bit. And she sat down, sat down as best she could in these tiny little chairs. I can't, you know, can you have a couple of real chairs? But she was, just clearly had been running at ninety miles an hour ever since the kids had been in the room. And it was, I can tell you that, from a teaching point of view and a learning point of view, I can be very clear, I think, about why all-day kindergarten makes a difference now. She was teaching way more than I think we expect as a district, because she doesn't have time to let them develop the answers on their own. She, yeah, she was, she's like, "Look, I don't like to talk this much, but I have to, because this is what the plan, this is what we have to deliver. This is accounting exercises we have to do. These are the sight words we have to learn." But then, at the end of the day, you know, we heard some items, some people talk about the alternate ways of learning, or the other ways of learning, that we expect children to learn by, like exploration, like hands-on, like learning themselves. And with five minutes left in the day today, the teacher broke out a series of balances. And this was a math exercise, where a heavy object is put on one side of the balance, and then some standard weights are put on the other side of the balance, one, two, three, four, five, and the children are supposed to learn that five can equal out one thing of some sorts, and three can equal out another thing. And it was student-driven. The students were the ones doing this, and that was the whole point. They were in teams, they were paired off, they were exploring, and there wasn't any time. The bell rang, get your coats on, you gotta get out of here. It was a shame, frankly, because the kids were doing very well. They enjoyed it, they thought it was exciting, they were learning themselves. The other thing is that we talk a lot about differentiated instruction in this district. And there is a reason that we talk a lot about differentiated instruction. The range of school readiness among students that come into kindergarten in our district is extraordinarily wide. I cannot begin to stress how, you know, we maybe look at our kids and say, fine, our kids know, you know, 3,000 sight words by the time they get to kindergarten, and they can do calculus and trigonometry and the rest of it. There is a huge range in school readiness. And to the extent we are asking teachers to instruct in a differentiated way, giving attention, more attention to some kids that need help, letting some kids explore on their own, the current schedule simply doesn't allow it. If you're, if you are, if you believe that we can do honest, effective, differentiated instruction in a two-and-a-half-hour day, I just believe you're mistaken. It can't happen. And it's not, by the way, a two-and-a-half-hour day. It's really more like a two-hour day. So let's be fair about that. I saw children learning how to interact. I saw children that were working together cooperatively to write stories that were told, "You have to stop now, and we'll deal with this tomorrow, because we just don't have enough time." We are asking a lot of our students. For better or for worse, we are in a different world than we were fifty years ago when I, when I went to kindergarten. I think, I do not think that this is the only answer. I don't think that this is going to, by itself, move the district to a completely different level. On the other hand, I am quite convinced that it is a piece, and it's an important piece. And I think that there is a reason why twenty-eight of the thirty-one schools in our reference group and the reference group above us have gone to full-day kindergarten, and why the other three are either considering it or have considered it. I do not believe that this, for me anyway, that I don't think this is driven primarily by Common Core state standards. I've compared the math framework from last year or two years ago compared to this year. They're different, but I don't think that's the issue. I think that even if we were working off of the old curriculum, I think that this makes sense. I really, I believe that. So I am, I have turned around on this, frankly. I have, and my experience today, I think, I was leaning toward it, but my experience today, I think, really cemented it for me. I think this is a good program. I think that, but it is also a program that is not ours to implement in the absence of community support. There are some decisions that we make as a Board of Education that solely belong to us. One is hiring a superintendent. We, some, to varying degrees in the past, have sought public input on that, but you know what? At the end of the day, it's our decision. A decision like this is not our decision, it is a community's decision. And I think that it is, that I consider my role as a Board of Education member to present alternatives, vet alternatives, and on, and an issue like this, where we've had, as Dr. Myers said, we've had more public input on this than any other single issue since I've been on the board since 1999, other than the high school. I think that it is not, I think that it is not prudent, not wise, for me as a board member to say, "We're not gonna give the community a chance to even vote on this," that we are satisfied that the community, that this isn't a benefit, and I want to hear what the community says on this. And I think that with prop, with a careful examination, I think with a lot of work, I think the community will support it. But I think it is fundamentally the community's decision to make. And for that reason, and all the other reasons that I mentioned, I will also be voting against the motion. And Dr. Moore, I forgot about you. Are you, do you wanna, you cannot vote, but you can certainly speak. Is there anything you want to add?
Thank you. It's a little tough for me to hear myself talk, so I did send a statement last night, and if somebody wanted to read a part of that, that'd be fine, or you can just really honestly voice myself for all the reasons that I express.
I think, Dr. Bell, it's crazy.
Yes, I do have it.
It's just the first paragraph.
Yeah, so I, this is from Dr. Moore's letter to us last night. "The first and most discussed aspect of the proposed budget is funding for all-day kindergarten. While this has become a very visible issue to the public recently, it is something that has been closely looked at by the administration and Board of Education for many years. Before my tenure on the board, it was considered, and I believe not, put forward primarily due to physical space considerations. Last year, an early version of the budget proposals considered it, and we discussed it at some length, but decided the timing was not right to fund it. This year, we have looked into it much more closely, and my opinion is that we have reached the time to allow the public the chance to vote on funding this initiative. This decision was not considered lightly. While I understand the position of those who are concerned about the financial impact of further budget increases, I think the question of whether we, as a community, feel we can afford it, should and will be answered at the polls. From an educational standpoint, I think the benefits of all-day kindergarten are clear, particularly as we begin to implement the Common Core state standards. All-day kindergarten should allow us greater flexibility in teaching required elements, while also having time to address the social and emotional needs of some of our youngest learners. My position on this was mostly, was most strongly influenced by the testimony of the teachers, who actually need to be teaching these children in a very limited amount of time, and who have advocated for a full-day to accomplish what they need to do."
Okay. Are there any other comments? All right, then, there is a motion that's been made and seconded, all in favor of the motion.
Aye.
Ms. Renner, all opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Six to one, the motion fails. So then we will move on to a consideration of the remainder of the budget. So is, are there any other motions to remove any items from the, Dr. Freeman's latest version? All right, then, is there a motion that we approve the budget as Dr. Freeman presented it here this evening?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I would like to just take the opportunity to address one small thing, not to change the budget, but to think as we move forward. Mr. Blas, you mentioned some figures that show that we have been providing a really excellent education at a lower cost than many of our other school districts. And we do, it is noted in the budget, I'm gonna address supplies and materials specifically here a second, that many of these lines remain below 2010 levels. I had a conversation with a teacher, actually, today, in response to my discovery that a junior I know at the high school is in an AP statistics class, in which half of the kids are using an old book and half of the kids are using a new textbook. Because despite this teacher's request for new books for the class, because of our textbook line item, although with the support of his department chairs, he was very clear on that, has only been able to piecemeal get the textbooks that he needs for the class. And in the past, has been able to have individual classes all working from the same textbook, but because of increased student interest in this class, he actually has a section this year in which the kids have, are working from slightly different textbooks. He seems to be working with this quite well, and assures me, as a parent of said junior, that in many ways, the textbooks are quite similar, and he's able to bridge this. But to me, it just speaks to the fact that we really need to be paying attention to this supply line, and making sure that, before we add new initiatives, that we're providing our teachers and our students with what they need. And I think our teaching staff does a remarkable job with what we give them, but I, I'm concerned that, that they're not getting, I'm concerned that they're not getting what they need. And I don't think it's my place, as a Board of Education member, to micromanage how our district leadership creates their own budgets. But it's certainly disappointing to think that we have students who are working with far less than optimal supplies in the classroom. So I'm quite sure that they will do just fine this year, but I would like us to keep this in mind as we move forward.
Any other comments? All right, motion has been made and seconded, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that vote is unanimous. And Dr. Moore has faded out, I hear.
Walked away from the camera.
All right. Good, well, thank you very much. We do have a, an adopted budget to move forward to the Board of Finance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We, we will be moving that forward to the Board of Finance. I would urge everybody in the public to keep an eye on the hearings before the Board of Finance, they will be important and obviously, there will be then a town meeting for the purpose of moving the budget proposal forward to referendum and I'd urge people to continue to make your voices heard. I do want to thank everybody who participated in the budget development process, both in getting in touch with us and at the workshops. And this was the, by far, the most open, involved group that we have had as part of a budget preparation in my time on the board, so thank you, thank you all. All right, let's see if we can resuscitate the rest of the agenda if we can. And I think maybe where we were is to take action on the minutes of January 13, regular meeting, January 16, special meeting relating to the budget, January 27 and January 28, forum on the budget. So, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any changes, corrections, additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. I was the reviewer for the month, we did talk about this in detail at the Operations Committee meeting preceding this meeting. In short, we had expenditures for the month of $4,871,907. We are almost exactly 50% of the budget expended. Coincidentally, we are exactly 50% of the year, so that's good. We did talk about whether Ms. Trudeau is able to predict whether we will be within budget from an operational point of view and she assures us that we will. We do continue to have issues with the health management or health insurance line and I should say, by the way, there is a possibility of a further reduction in that line in the budget as we move through the Board of Finance process. That issue has received extraordinary attention this year and as it should and we're going to continue to work on it. But in any event, that, those are our expenses for the month and so I would move that we approve the monthly expenditures in the amount that I stated, $4.8 million.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
I recuse myself.
Yes, okay. We, see, now we're, now we're making headway here, we're always, yes.
Page two, page two.
Yes, as Paul Harvey would say, right?
I'm wagering yourself.
I've already done that tonight. Eleven is unfinished business, I assume there is none. Committee reports, Policy Committee, Mrs. Dudley is not here, Operations Committee, we met, is there a report, anything you want to mention?
Yes, well, we discussed, it was actually great, Mr. Gurnum gave an overview of the facilities, sort of the status of each school and the highlights of what's been done in the recent past, which we thought would be beneficial for new members of the board and also for folks who weren't on Facilities Committee before. And I thought that was very helpful and so we're expecting to receive shortly the five-year, the five-year plan.
And there is actually also going to be some bonding that we're going to move forward to the Board of Finance in an amount that's a little bit uncertain, right? Roughly $3 million for window, door and safety improvements at Adams and also for other, and safety improvements at four other schools. So, that's, that's, that's going to be an important item, but we're trying to, we'll have those numbers soon.
You'll have them tomorrow. We'll have the five-year plan tomorrow and we'll continue to refine those bond numbers. We're particularly excited to put a five-year capital plan in your hands tomorrow for discussion at our next Operations Committee. And kudos to Mr. Gurnum and to Mr. Bowden for putting that together.
High school building committee, anything going on?
Building Committee meets tomorrow evening. We are entering a phase of the project where we're beginning to identify room finishes, placement of outlets in the floors, color finishes for different areas in the building. Tomorrow night at the Building Committee, there will be a particular focus on the main foyer, on that entry space as you enter the building and how we will identify Guilford Public Schools. Before the meeting, we'll be, we'll be looking at mockups. There are actually going to be masonry mockups of what interior walls and sections will look like, we'll be reviewing those. We're entering a really exciting phase of the project, it's very exciting. I'll be in attendance tomorrow evening and we'll continue to report out to the board. If you're unable to make it, Mr. Boss, I know that you reviewed this month, so does that mean that you're supposed to?
What time is the meeting?
It's seven o'clock in this room tomorrow.
I'll do what I can.
Okay, if not, I'm happy to report back.
What happened to the black box theater?
I'm sorry?
What happened with the black box?
They continue to monitor the black box, they approved the first phase of design. Taissu Kim presented three or four different options for placement of the black box. We selected and encouraged them to move forward with the most practically functional. And when you talk about a black box, that's appropriate, it is meant to be a simple experimental space. So, only the first stage of design has been approved and the Building Committee continues to watch very carefully that burn rate, the expenditure of the contingency. They're being very thoughtful and very careful about decisions around finance until we continue to pass some of the hurdles.
Okay, any town committee liaison reports?
I went to my first land acquisition committee meeting and I'll report two things. Your fellow board member, Keith Bishop, has stayed on as a member-at-large of the Land Acquisition Committee, so he says hello to everyone, keep up the good work.
I think it could have been predicted he was not going to drop entirely out of sight of the town government.
And secondly, they, they took action to recommend to the town to rename the East River Preserve the Carol Lee Evans.
Oh, nice.
Not quite sure how Carol Lee herself would have felt about that, but she was more of a doer than a namer.
Doesn't matter, I would ignore whatever her wishes were in the circumstances.
She can't object to it.
Those sort of comments were made at the meeting.
I did, I should also note that we did probably talk more about the Pension Committee in this budget process than all of the other budgets put together. And, and we are fortunate to have Mr. Sands on our board who, who was, was able to go through the Milliman actuary report and actually, and not only understand it, but have good questions and comments about it. And I've asked Mr. Sands to serve as a liaison from our board to the Town Pension Committee and he's agreed to do that, so I'm very pleased that he's accepted that and I think that that's going to be a helpful dialogue for us, given that it is a substantial part of our budget and, and look forward to his input on that. I did talk to a member of the committee and they, he thought that the March meeting would be a good one to go to because there is a Milliman representative who's going to be present then and they're going to be talking about some policies change, but I would suggest that you just contact the chair of the committee and ask for any information. It's on their minutes and their agendas are on the town website, so, thank you. Public questions, anybody?